Gracious heavenly Father, we're blessed to be in your presence tonight, Lord, and we are blessed as a city. And Father, we're blessed as an organization with some very dedicated council. Father, I thank you for the occasion of this meeting tonight, and I ask your wisdom and discernment be upon them, and that decisions are made that would be for the good of the whole tonight. Father, we thank you so much for the beauty of this day, this great land and this great state. Father, we thank you for the men and women who are willing to sacrifice to guarantee the freedom to assembly like we are doing tonight. We thank you so much for their devotion and sacrifice, and their families as well. Protection be upon them, Lord. Father, we ask to give peace to their families as well. Thank you so much for your son, Jesus, for the blood that was shed on our behalf. Thank you, Jesus, for being willing to go, Lord, thank you for giving up your son. We ask all these favors in his holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into community-related announcements, I want to take a minute to talk about something. Tonight is a kind of a big deal for the city of Midwest City in the fact that this is Mr. Henson's last council meeting that he's going to have to attend. And I doubt very, very seriously if he'll be compelled to attend any more after this. But tomorrow, we're going to get together and commemorate forty years of service to this community that has been provided to us by Mr. Henson. His thumbprint is going to be left on this city for quite a while. And I'm talking about the redevelopment of Twenty-Ninth and the entertainment district, talking about Cedar Rose Development, and many, many other projects that's been guided by him during his tenure, not only as the community development director, but also as city manager. The average tenure of a city manager in the state of Oklahoma is five years. He's been city manager of Midwest City for over fifteen. And that says a lot about his tenacity and his ability to do his job and lead this city. Again, we're going to come together tomorrow and commemorate and celebrate his retirement, a well-earned retirement at that. So would you please stand and give him the honor he deserves? Thank you for your indulgence on that. And I'll go around the horseshoe and see if anybody has anything else to add.
Since you're going to do that, I would like to just say a few words, although I'm going to try to save most of them for tomorrow. To the citizens and to the council, I wish to thank all of the city staff, the city councils, the many city councils that I've had a chance to work with, and the many citizens of the community that I've had a blessing opportunity to work with. It has been a very rewarding career. I will look back upon it on my many years with happiness and a great deal of gratitude. Again, thank you for the opportunity to serve and hopefully to make a difference in this community. Thank you.
Okay, community-related announcements. Ms. Eads?
So this Thursday is the Neighborhood Association Cookout. Starts at 5:30 PM. And it's going to be, excuse me, at the Rotary Pavilion at Joby Barnes Regional Park. So all of the Neighborhood Association members and folks are invited to come out and join. There's going to be hamburgers and hot dogs. I'm searching for Mike. There he is. Sorry. Hamburgers and hot dogs are provided. Bring your own drinks and chips. Pat's giving me the flyer that you gave me earlier. So please remember to bring your drinks. So that's the only one I have. And Father's Day is Sunday, for those of you who might not be aware. Please remember your dads and all the important men in your life.
Of course, following that, Fourth of July Tribute to Liberty be held at Joby Barnes Park. Large fireworks displayed and entertainment. We encourage everyone to attend, weather permitting. Anybody else? Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations we need to do, so... Will Major Gregory Vernon come forward? Well, once again, we're coming together and we're losing a lot of experience going out the door. And Major Vernon has decided to retire and go on to bigger and better things. So with that being said, whereas Major Gregory Vernon began his employment with the city of Midwest City on August 2nd, 1993 as a firefighter, and is retiring on May 20th, 2019 as a major. Whereas from the beginning of his career, Greg has proven that he is generous, selfless, hardworking, cooperative, dependable, and being devoted to his work and providing public safety. Whereas Major Vernon would spend countless hours performing various duties, Assistant Chief McManus. He also jumped in and helped anytime, even volunteering to use his own personal equipment, resulting in savings in the city, as from Chief Olson. Whereas received, he has received many accolades from both employees and citizens, including great empathy and respect for citizens and his expertise in critical situations. He's worked harmlessly, harmlessly on his career. He's displayed diligence and initiative and saved lives due to the good assessment, patience, and rescue skills. And because of his professionalism and knowledge set what we should, or what should be the standard for fire service, I therefore, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim May 23rd as Major Greg Vernon Day in the city, and I urge all citizens to show your appreciation to Major Vernon for his substantial contributions to our community. Don't look away, Mr. Foster. Your turn. Another one that we're retiring, but you're not retiring, are you? You jumped from the fire into the frying pan, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
And who's going to be your bee bout in Shawnee?
I don't think there's going to be a bee bout.
I was just curious.
I know who the union president is, but we have got a Shawnee.
Whereas Training Chief Rodney Foster began his career as a Midwest City in July 1998 as a firefighter, retiring in June 19th as Training Chief. And whereas from the beginning of his career, Training Chief Foster has proven that he's respectful, professional, dependable, and values education as an essential lifesaving skill. Thus, his efforts have enhanced the safety of his colleagues within the city and surrounding communities. And whereas he has devoted countless hours to improving the knowledge and abilities and safety of firefighters. He sets the standards of a Training Chief by conducting extra safety classes not done before him. And because of his expertise and professionalism, has been, has, was selected to participate in formation of the response procedures for the Seaburn Regional and Intermediate Units for Oklahoma. And whereas throughout his career, he has demonstrated the willingness to go above and beyond to help out stations restoring sprinkler systems, creating lockers, benches, and much more. Furthermore, he has generously given of his time and talent to many different charities in the city. So therefore, I, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim June 4th as Rodney Foster Day in the city of Midwest City, and hereby, all citizens, to show your appreciation to Training Chief Foster for a substantial difference that he's made to our fire department and community, and wish you the best of luck in Shawnee, Oklahoma.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. One other thing I forgot to mention is there's kind of a big car show. It's going to be in the city this weekend. The Buick Car Club of America is going to be having their annual car show and get-together at the Reed Center this weekend, starting in earnest Thursday. On the upwards of about a hundred and fifty to two hundred vintage Buick cars are going to be in town. And if you're out and about and don't have anything to do, it'd be well worth your while to go by and see these folks. They've got quite a collection of vehicles. Any more announcements? Well, we'll move into our consent agenda this evening. These items are placed on the consent agendas of the council by unanimous consent. Can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item to be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Hold on one second.
We need to pull C5 in that it needs to be contained on two agendas, and it's only on one.
I'm sorry?
We just need to have no action on C5.
Pull C5 and no action. With that being said, the chaired entertainer revised the motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda and to remove C5.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that we need to pull C9 and vote on that separate.
Okay, the entertainer revised the motion.
Motion to approve and to pull C5 and C9.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Yes, I have. No action is needed on C5, is that correct? Okay, on C9, it's a discussion and consideration of approving a resolution, resolution naming new park and town center as J. Guy Henson Park, and officially expressing appreciation and recognition to Mr. Henson for his forty years of dedicated service and strategic forward-thinking leadership of the city of Midwest City and its citizens.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you for doing that. Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, and Mr. Henson, you'll have a park named after you. Now you and Eddie Reed will have something to talk about.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Henson. I have enjoyed you being city manager. I came in 2014, so I just appreciate everything that you have done for my ward and for Midwest City entirely. Thank you.
We'll move into our discussion items for this agenda. Discussion item number one.
This is PC 1995. This is a public hearing with discussion consideration of an ordinance to redistrict from R6 Single Family Detached Residential to O2 General Office for the property described as a part of Lot 1 of Block 2 of the Friendly Acres Edition addressed as 11126 East Reno Avenue. Mr. Harless?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Henson. This is a request to rezone the property from R6 Single Family Detached Residential to O2 General Office District. The proposed use is a dialysis center. No variants are requested with this application. No public improvements are required with this application. However, through the building permit process, sidewalk improvements and half-street improvements will be required along Friendly Drive. This item was tabled at the May 7th Planning Commission meeting due to the concerns regarding drainage from a budding property owner. He was, he showed up at the council meeting, or Planning Commission meeting, and expressed his concerns of how the drainage was going over Friendly Drive from his property. It was tabled, and this applicant, the applicant provided additional information regarding to the design of the two detention ponds. After review of the additional information, the city engineer has found that the development will not impact the street crossing for the adjacent property owner. There's additional information included for the 1.2 acre tract that's being rezoned. Couple of things that's happened since then is just that staff has met out with additional city staff, Public Works, and to talk about getting an easement across the property on the east side of Friendly Drive, and that goes forward. But also, I think there's a few maintenance issues that the, that Public Works will be able to take care of as far as cleaning culverts and taking care of that property. So Planning Commission and Council recommend approval at this time. Be glad to answer any questions.
So if we approve this, the stuff that you're talking about, the easement and the maintenance stuff, is that going to be included in it, or how does that work?
No, I think is what we'll do is that that property owner has agreed to do that, and it's not really tied to this zoning. What they've done on their property, in layman's terms, not to speak for the engineer, but they've divided up the drainage to the best they can on that lot to reduce the impact the best they can to the property to the south. I've personally talked to the property owner a couple of times, and he's satisfied that the city is working to reduce, to reduce that impact. Patrick, I don't know if you have any additional information on that?
So what assurance do we have that that's going to happen if it's not accorded?
As far as the property to the east, there, I can't provide any assurance that that'll happen. What we can provide insurances, assurances, is that the property that we're listening to the zoning to or hearing the zoning now, that they will move forward with the application and their building permit as they proposed, and worked out with the city engineer, with Mr. Menefee.
Yeah, let me clarify. This actual piece of property is on the west side of Friendly. The work that the city's trying to accomplish is on the east side of Friendly downstream. This doesn't have a direct impact on this, but the resident that came in and voiced their concerns is talking about a crossing that's south of this and north of his property that needs some attention. We're trying to work with the property owner that's on the east side of Friendly Road. They have been agreeable. They've already agreed to give us a side triangle. We're trying to work out some drainage easement as well. So doing work downstream will help with the impact that's happening upstream.
Which brings up exactly what I was asking. You just said you're trying to work out some drainage easements. But we're being asked to vote on something, and you don't have those drainage easements, right?
Yes, sir, but these two property owners are separate. I just wanted to let you know they're being proactive. We're trying to not only satisfy this item. They are taking their water, they're taking it across the street. They're using underground detention. They're meeting all of their regulations. But not only that, we're trying to take the step of working with the east property owner to continue to convey that water downhill. Hopefully, it'll improve the situation for that whole intersection. But they are two separate items. The eastern property owner has been more than agreeable. He's been working with staff. He's already ready to sign one of the instruments, and a second one, we're trying to work with the family to make sure that everybody understands what they're conveying to us before we have them sign some type of document, just to make sure they're clear on what they're doing. But this west side property is actually upstream from this. The work that we're looking at is on the east side there. If you see on the monitor, the dash line where the creek bottom is on the display, is where we're working to try to help the area drainage. It doesn't have a direct impact on that square of the area request, but it'll have a positive impact on the area upstream, on the west side of Friendly, and as it goes down towards Reno and towards Stone Creek.
Where's the property owner, if he has the concern?
He lives to the south on the west side.
So right, south of the property?
No, it's a little bit further south.
Do you have your pointer that you can point?
Sure. So, I have to stay in my hand here. The property owner that raised the concerns is right here. And obviously, this is the subject property. The drainage crosses this neighbor's, or this subject property along the south side, along that area right there, and it's having trouble getting under the road right here and then going across this property. All the drainage comes this direction, towards this. And some of the drainage comes off this property right here, heading south. What they have done with the, what the engineers have done, and we've reviewed, is how the drainage is taken care of on this property as to not impact going south.
So maybe a question for another day. We have engineers, and as an engineer, you've got that seal that you can, what's it, PE or whatever it stands for? It's a professional. They're certified that it's good. So say ten years from now, it fails, water's going off. Do we have any recourse on the engineers that signed off on this to go back and say, hey, you said this was going to be good, but now these neighbors are flooding?
That would really...
It depends on if the design was flawed, if someone installed a system, and for ten years it worked, and then it quit working, you know, then you have concerns.
I mean, we rely on these, and I totally trust you, but we've got an outside guy that's done this who I don't know. And we rely on people that we don't know to get this stuff right. Just long-term, what recourse do we have if we come to find out that they just really sucked at their job?
Well, there's still the property owner that has a vested interest in making sure his drainage works on their property and has a leased property.
So basically, what you're saying is, he certifies it, but if he screwed up, he's out of the mix, and there's nothing that can be done to get back on him?
No, sir. There's always liability on those things, but that's really more between the owner and his developer and his engineer.
But is it not a little bit between the city also, because we're telling the homeowner south that the engineer has signed off on this? He said it's good, and we take his word for it. Hang on a second. Heather's got her air traffic control finger going.
The dilemma is that the, under the Torque Claims Act, and given what the city's role in that, the city would not necessarily have liability. And because of that, we would not, the city would not necessarily have standing to bring a lawsuit against the engineer. However, as Patrick, I think, was trying to explain, the individuals who are on the receiving end of the drainage would have a civil action based on the damages that they might be receiving.
So the Torque Claim Act keeps us from getting sued when we rely on somebody? I don't mean us as a council, but I mean us as a city. Limits the ability to sue. Anybody can sue for anything.
Yeah. It limits our liability in terms of, as long as they have complied with ordinances that we have put in place. And as Patrick has pointed out, if the study was done appropriately, if there are issues with the extent of that study that was done on behalf of the city, really, the action would be against him, not necessarily the city, and by the individual suffering the damage.
But at the same time, if you look at how many drainage issues we've had come in here, the focus isn't on, like, is the city actually legally liable for this? It's a, we've got a gallery full of constituents with a drainage problem and nowhere else to go, or it's not functioning for them to go somewhere else?
And that's sort of why I was asking, is the sins of our fathers, we don't have any control over. I'm just wanting to make sure that two or three councils down the road aren't talking about the sins of their fathers, which would be us.
Right, and that's why I think I would defer to Espy, since it's in her ward on this one.
Me, I have an issue with it, because I've had so many drainage issues in my ward, and I'm still having issues with those. And if we don't have a concrete line in place from the owners and the project people, I would say, right now, I'd have to say vote no.
Is there somebody from this development here to speak?
Yes, sir.
The west, okay, let me try to understand this. That the property owner on the east is working to mitigate the drainage issues, which is running from the south to the northwest, correct? There's an unimproved drainage creek that runs along through there. And the water from that eastern property runs into that. Where's, and the water from the zoning request is running where?
It's going to run under Friendly Drive to the east side of it, and then it's going to pipe around. We're working with Public Works to pipe that around to Reno, so it will bypass this area and the troubled spot where that cross is.
So, and you know that we're not picking on you.
No, sir.
Drainage issues are what we keep getting our eyes being shut with, rightfully so, as many as the residents that are out here. And so where are we? You've got a concerned look on your face.
I totally understand, and I wouldn't, I don't want to present anything that would be at a disadvantage for the council to think about. What they're proposing is they will take all the water that's on their side. And right now, it's impacting this crossing. They'll take in the piping under the street and go downstream from it and bypass this crossing. The second part of that is that staff is efforting to work with the eastern property owner to not only, it does have a direct impact with this addition, but it would help with that crossing and take the water to the northeast toward those...
When you, Patrick, when you say the eastern lot, you're referring to the lot on the east side of Friendly?
Yes, sir.
So what you're trying to do is to facilitate some downstream improvements to get the, to help the water flow as it comes from west to east.
Yes, sir.
On the property to the south of the proposed development, and then also onto the development site itself. And that water then drains across the street into Friendly, and you're trying to improve the drainage on the east side of Friendly going north.
Yes, to continue it out, to flow of water to the northeast towards Reno.
Right, there's a drainage box underneath Reno at that part, point that goes into Stone Creek.
Okay, Patrick, why don't we do this? Why don't we table it and bring it back after we've went through and talked with the owners of the properties?
I think this is public discussion. He's got a right to say...
This is a public hearing, sir. Could you go ahead and state your name and address for the record?
Hi, good evening. My name is Gary O'Brien with Ingram Civil Engineering Group. Address is 102 Hidden Point Hendersonville, Tennessee, which is outside of Nashville.
Okay, sir. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, we've worked with Patrick on this plan, and we've installed our, we haven't installed, we've designed on our property, on that parcel, obviously, the building and parking lots. But we've also designed two underground detention chambers, which will be catching all the water from the site and releasing it at a much smaller rate to go across Friendly. We're actually reducing the peak flow from over nine and a half CFS cubic feet per second to almost a tenth of a CFS. So whatever, that's a huge decrease in the amount of water that we're sending across. So we've done everything we can to, we've met... everything we can to, we've met all requirements, codes, and gone above and beyond, really, to try to reduce the water impacting our neighbor to the south. You know, we are proposing to install a couple of pipes under Friendly to get it to the other side of Friendly. Obviously, we don't own the other side of Friendly, so, I mean, we've done everything we can. And I think I'm correct in saying, the water, once it gets across Friendly, it will, it will flow downhill and away from the road and to the stream, right? You're just trying to do, make some improvements to help it flow better, if I'm, if I'm hearing that correctly. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
So I, I don't want you to think that we're flooding, we're still flooding somebody. I don't think we are. I think what they're trying to do is, is put some, some public improvements that would help get that water on out more quickly.
So we're going from R six to O two, what, what's going in there?
I'm sorry.
We're, we're going from an R six to an O two, what, what is?
It's a dialysis clinic.
Dialysis clinic, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So, could I, could I ask a question? Is the, the water that is coming from the southwest, is, is there water coming from the southwest across your property?
From the southwest?
Yes, what I'm trying to get to is, through the development of your property, are you still going to allow water to go across your property to get to and go into your detention structures?
Yes. What water flows there now, I guess it would still flow.
So it will not adversely, the development of this property will not adversely affect the drainage that the property to the south of you will, will, is or will be receiving in the future?
No, sir. As you see, on that particular map right there shows the water that goes from off-site, where that one is, that's the area that's coming from off-site into our property, and it will continue to come that way too also. So, and it does not, as you see, we're not discharging any water to the south. Our water goes east across.
I'm, I'm just trying to get to the, a resolution or an answer that, that when you build your development, will you be forcing the water onto the lot to the south?
No. No, I, I think your engineer would agree with that.
And the property owner was, that was his concern. He didn't want any additional water. He knows that he's getting some, but most of his water is coming from the west through, through his side property, his north property line.
Councilwoman, I defer to the council person in that ward. I'm okay with this, but if you still want a table or you're not okay with it, I will follow your lead on this.
I am not okay with it. We've had too many issues. I get calls and I still get emails from people that are in developments that have been developed right now within my ward that are still having the, the problem with the issues with the drainage.
If we tabled this, what suggestions you had to meet with him and the engineers to go? Or, sir, would you be amicable to that? I know you're from Tennessee, but...
That's not an issue. I, I just don't know what more we can do.
Have you sat down and talked to Ward Three Councilwoman yet?
I have not.
Then that's what you can do.
Okay.
That being said, Chair, entertain a motion on the action.
Motion to, to table it?
Second.
And conditions on the bringing it back?
Bringing it back where we have an agreement of both the homeowners that are there and the developer.
Okay. So, to bring it back, a meeting has to be had by the southernmost property owner to the, to the development, and also a plan from the east side, property owner.
You want to be involved in it, right?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a motion on the floor.
Any other?
I, I would suggest that you might put that tabling out to not the next meeting, but the two meetings out, just to give enough time to work out the details and get people together.
Very, very good point.
It doesn't kill the project.
No, no, it doesn't kill the project, no.
It delays it down.
Just, just delays it a few months, a few weeks. So, that being said, well, that would be the...
First meeting in July?
First, second meeting in July.
I'm not here yet.
No, first meeting in July.
Let's go first meeting in July then.
What would that, they be?
We'll bring it back to the first meeting in July, sir, and facilitate some of the discussion. Is that good with you?
I'm gonna come back and back.
That's, that's okay.
That's fine.
It's okay. Just want to get a clarification is what I'm asking for.
Okay. So I do have a motion to table and bring it back to the first meeting in July. That being said, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We'll, we'll hear it again the first meeting in July, sir. Thank you for your indulgence.
So who does he need to contact to set this meeting up?
Uh, Ms. Donaldson.
Okay. Make sure he's got your number, Jill.
Actually, you didn't contact, you didn't have your number.
We'll continue with second discussion item on the agenda.
This is a public hearing with discussion consideration of adopting a resolution approving the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $96,513,779 and establishing budget amendment authority. The budget for this coming fiscal year is being submitted for your consideration and adoption. There has been due diligence on the part of the council and administration to provide the attached budget message, budget summary, and resolution. Additional information by fund and department can be seen in the appendix of this agenda. Budget meeting was held on May 21st with council. As required by state law, a public hearing will be held prior to adoption. Staff recommends that the budgets be adopted by resolution at the department level as discussed in the budget meeting with adjustments.
This is a public hearing and discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning the budget for next fiscal year? And as usual, this is available online. Am I not correct? Okay. That being said, Chair, entertain a motion.
I think we would be remiss if we didn't thank Christie for all the hard work and all the department heads, because she speaks in a language that we understand.
With that being said, thank you to the Finance Department, Christie and your staff for, yes, bringing it to us so we can understand it. That being said, Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion, second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. A call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have two discussion items on the, or three discussion items on the agenda.
First item.
First item is the minutes of the May 21st, 2019 meeting and the minutes of May 28th,
2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Second item.
Discussion consideration of supplemental budget adjustments to the following funds for FY 2018, 2019. Increased capital improvement revenue bond fund expenses slash transfers out, $11,503,124. Expenses, $1,019,849 FFNE reserve fund revenues transfers in, $11,503,124. Supplements are needed to budget fund issuance and interest costs and transfer of bond proceeds from capital improvement revenue bond fund to, the revenue bond fund to hotel conference center fund. This is, Christie, this is the money for the renovation, the proceeds from the recent bond issue, correct?
That being said, Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item.
Public hearing with discussion consideration of adopting a resolution of the Midwest City Municipal Authority approving its budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $47,598,707. This is the budget for the 1920 fiscal year. There's been due diligence on the part of the trustees and the administration to provide the attached resolution. There was a budget meeting held on May, May 21st with the board. Public hearing will be held prior to adoption. Staff recommends approval that the, that the bu, that the budget be adopted by resolution in the budget meeting with adjustments.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Uh, hold on just a minute. I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have to bring anything before the authority concerning the budget? That being said, go ahead.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the municipal authority? Hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. Now called to order the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We have four discussion items on the agenda.
First item is approval of the minutes of the May 21st, 2019 meeting and also the May 28th, 2019 meeting.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Second item.
This is public hearing with discussion consideration of adopting a resolution of the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority approving its budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $5,543,493 for the discretionary, $1,833,988 for the compounded principal, $2,520,930 for the hospital expansion loan reserve, $21,591,467 for the in lieu of ROR miscellaneous, and $458,497 for the grants division. Again, this is the budget, hospital authority budget for 2019, 2020. Appropriate due diligence has been done by the trustees and the administration. The budget, proposed budget was reviewed by the authority on May 21st, and this is a public hearing, and staff recommends that the budget be adopted.
Motion to approve.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority
about the budget for this year? That being said, go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Third item.
Chairman and trustees, I would like to just call your attention on this, on this last item. Under the revised trust indenture that was approved by the Chamber of Commerce and the hospital authority, there were some stipulations provided for that the grants would be set up in a separate fund so that monies, if not all the money was, was utilized, or if there was money that came back from some of the grants, that that money would stay segregated in a separate, separate division. And so, we have done that this year with this budget.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion consideration of accepting an update by J.R. Reskevak with Capital Decisions, Inc. regarding economic community development and redevelopment interest in Midwest City. Mr. Reskevak is in the audience. He's provided a report that reviews activities between January 1, 2019 through June 30th of 2019. Mr. Reskevak?
Thank you for the opportunity. Good to see everybody. Talk about five things tonight that we've been doing, and then I'll take a point of personal privilege, if you don't mind, Mayor. Water Resources Development Act. I'm pleased to tell you that based upon passage of the WIN Act last year, our project, that was funded by your bond issue, or a portion of it, has now been extended through September 20th, September 30th of 2020. It shouldn't make a difference because, as you all know, we were able to arrange a meeting with the Tulsa District Corps in Tulsa to discuss the modification of the project, which was an additional storage tank, which is approximate cost of $2 million to the fully funded project. Terry's working on a modification, Section 701, a modification to expand the scope of the project to make sure that we are able to match the authorization with appropriate funding. I'm happy to report that this week, the House has added $100 million to the Section 206 program. Usually, that's only about an add of about 30 million, which will give us a step up in competing for full funding for this project this fall. So we're working with the delegation. Couple of my colleagues that used to work at the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee has talked to, as well as Senator Inhofe's office, the head of the 206 program at Corps Headquarters, and things are looking better than I've seen in a couple of years. So I'm excited about that prospect, to get it done and off our books. Second issue we're working is the Build Act. As you know well, the Department of Transportation, U.S. Department of Transportation, is going under about a $900 million grant program. Maximum project per grant's about 25 million. The mayor wrote to the Secretary of Transportation in February on the I-40 Douglas Interchange Project. We're working with the delegation on that. Applications are due through ODOT on July 13th, and contract public award, grant awards will be on November 23rd of this year. So there's gonna be a quick turnaround there. In the activity report that we submitted to you is, not only is there a support letter for the Ward of Project that we drafted and signed by Senator Inhofe, the Assistance for Firefighter Grant Program, the Fire Department has a SAFER grant in an amount of about $350,000 that they've submitted this year. As you know, last year we were awarded about $330,000. The second is a $30,000 micro grant, where there's also a delegation support letter that we drafted and had circulated for review. I anticipate those are rolling awards. Because of the government shutdown last January, we're kind of pushed out, and I anticipate that's a rolling award grant process. We'll keep you updated every Friday as they come out, but anticipate, probably, as I told the chief, probably near the end of July, those rolling awards will begin to be awarded. We were also able to, without much success, or however Robert wants to phrase it, had the Regional Administrator of GSA, a former partner in our firm, meet with you all regarding utilization of Heritage Park Mall. Mayor, I know there were some options available that were probably not too popular, so we had dropped the idea, but I contacted Bobby last week, and they're looking at some other federal uses to at least talk to you all about with regards to Heritage Park Mall. He did reach out to me in terms of setting up that meeting by virtue of the fact that he was here for the memorial, the April memorial dedication. And he also had some work to do, had a tinker of which he wouldn't talk to me about. So, so be it. Third of all, we've talked about the Defense Community Infrastructure Grant Program. Got authorized last year, no money against it. The House Armed Services Committee had met this week. They took the $100 million authorization, put 50 million of that towards schools and another pot of money, the Office of Economic Adjustment. We anticipate that the appropriators and the... We anticipate that the appropriators in the Senate Defense Subcommittee will provide that money and that we'll be able to hopefully run a grant application against it for some community infrastructure needs, the Tinker needs and obviously the community needs. So, so right now we have about, you know, as you look at it, about 27 million dollars in grant funding pending that will be, has been applied for or will be applied for. And we're hoping that by December 1, we'll make, we'll ensure that this WARDA project that we've been talking about and you all are probably hearing about, now that it's been funded by a bond issue, the expansion of it, we anticipate the fiscal year 20 core work plan to come out the first week of December. So with that, I will tell you that generally speaking, on the high, on this kind of ethereal level, they're trying to come to some agreement on budget spending caps this week. If they can get the defense and non-defense discretionary funding settled, the appropriations process looks to be pretty smooth. Regardless of border wall or no border wall funding, that will be smooth and will allow us to, you know, continue to advocate for, for a lot of these projects. So we have WARDA, we have the Build Act, which will have some result in, in November. The GSA we continue to talk to and then, once the grant program, once it's appropriated, then we'll be working with the city on identifying some projects that we can, you know, obviously apply for that are going to be of some interest to the city and also to Tinker Air Force Base. But these are basically outside the gate projects of benefit to our contiguous military installation. Happy answering questions, comments? The point of personal privilege is, Guy and I met in 1999 in a less than ideal circumstance with a tornado, with a large portion of your tax base disappearing unfortunately, and obviously the, you know, sadness of the loss of human life. Over the last many years, we've been able to advocate for the city. I've worked with many city managers in the state and to a person, his selfless, his selfless service to this community is above reproach. And we can't thank him more, he's a good friend, selfless interest to the city. And I wish you well as you play in the park that's named after you, I guess, is probably the best way to do it. With that, thank you, Tim, look forward to working with you. There's a lot more to do and a lot more lore to think about as, as we move ahead. So to the council, thanks for continued support. I know my contract's not up tonight, it's up in a couple of weeks, I will not be here, but appreciate your continued support. Guy, once again, thanks for what you've done for the city, we've been, we've enjoyed our relationship with you all and helping rebuilding the tax base. And we've been here so long that the community storm shelter that we built with federal money at the basement of the Reed Center is no longer the weather ready thing to do.
Thank you, J.R.
Thank you so much, Mayor, appreciate your time, thank you, Council.
There's no further questions, entertain a motion to approve the report.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate if you sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, next item.
This is discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. No action is necessary.
No action necessary, on number four, we move into the new business public discussion.
Uh, yes, we had an addendum, I'm sorry.
You got it. Sorry, I thought that was pulled.
The addendum is discussion consideration of approving and expenditure funds in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand dollars to LEMKE Land Surveying for Boundary and Topographic Design Survey Services related to the 2018 Moving Midwest City Forward Bond Issue Multipurpose Sports Complex located in the 9,200 to 9,400 blocks of Southeast 29th Street in Oklahoma City. This is a companion item to that that you acted on in the city council, it'll allow us to move forward on some important survey related information that's needed to develop plans for the area.
Any discussion? Chair, entertain a motion.
My only clarification on that is, and I asked upon this question beforehand, but the cost, the 38,000, is included in the bond money related to this project, just for transparency's sake, correct?
Yes, it, go ahead, Bond. Yes, that is correct, Ms. Eads. Part of the process to build is to get this property surveyed and so that we can begin to do site planning. The reason we placed it on both agendas is there currently the property's owned by the authority. We're going to be in the process through all this, these documents, my apologies for not getting this on the council agenda appropriately. City Attorney and, and Jill bailed me out on this and was able to get it, get an addendum out in time, but we, we wanted to be on both agendas because of the way the property's currently owned and the fact that we're going to be surveying a little bit more as well, other than just the multipurpose site.
With that, I have.
Sarah had a little to do with that as well, helping bail me out on this situation, so thanks to all of you for helping me correct my mistake.
With that, I move to approve.
I saw already been a motion.
Excuse me, second.
We have a motion and we have a second, all in favor, indicate if you sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, now we move into the new business public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the hospital authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I called it, called to order the Midwest City Economic Development Authority, we have two discussion items on the agenda.
First item is approval of the May 21st, 2019 meeting minutes and then also the minutes of the May 28th, 2019 meeting.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Got a motion? Got a second, all in favor, indicate if you sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, second item.
Public hearing with discussion consideration of adopting a resolution of the Midwest City Economic Development Authority approving its budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 in the amount of one million, four hundred and seventeen thousand and forty-eight dollars. Again, this is the budget for the 1920 year. Trustees and administration have done appropriate due diligence, there was a budget meeting on May 21st to review the proposed budget, this is a public hearing, staff recommends approval.
This is a public hearing, does anybody have any questions about the budget for the Economic Development Authority? Hearing none, Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate if you sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. I would ask that we recess from the Economic Development Authority and move into the Midwest City Utilities Authority.
Motion to recess.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate if you sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're hereby recessed, now called to order the Midwest City Utilities Authority, we have two discussion items on the agenda.
First item is approving the minutes of the staff briefing and special meeting of December 11th, 2018 and May 21st, 2019 as submitted.
Move to approve.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate if you sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries, second item.
Public hearing with discussion consideration of adopting a resolution of the Midwest City Utilities Authority approving its budget for this 2019-2020 year in the amount of 20,200 dollars.
This is a public hearing, anybody have any questions about the budget for the Utilities Authority? Hearing none, or we entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate if you sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Move into the new business public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the Utilities Authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned, and I call to order, back to order, the Economic Development Authority and we do have a executive, we move into the public, new business public discussion of this agenda, does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we do have an executive session.
This is discussion consideration of one entering into executive session as allowed under 25 OS Section 307b3 discussing, discussing the purchase or appraisal of real property and 25 OS Section 307c11 for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development including the transfer of property, financing or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within their jurisdiction if public disclosure of the matter discussed would interfere with the development of products or services or if the public disclosure would violate the confidentiality of the business. And two, an open session authorized in the city manager to take appropriate action, take action as appropriate based upon the discussion in executive session.
Chair, entertain a motion, move into executive session. Motion and a second, all in favor, indicate if you sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are in, moving into executive session, we will not return back to the council chambers, thank you for being here.